October two, twenty twenty four, regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I'm Mayor Nathan Box and I'm calling the meeting to order. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Byrd.
Present.
Vreeman.
Here.
Vreeman?
Here.
Corbin. Sol.
Here.
Rowan. Shay.
Here.
Schulteis. Mayor Box.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. We're going to begin this evening's meeting as we have for many years, first with opening prayer, followed immediately by the pledge of allegiance, and I would invite you to join us if you're so inclined.
I invite you to pray with me. Lord, thank you for another beautiful day. You've blessed us with so many in recent weeks, in the midst of a phenomenal year. Lord, help us do your work. Help us make decisions that serve you and serve the people of this great city. Help us enjoy good conversation with one another. Help us enjoy good discussion. Help us learn from one another. Help us grow. And help us ultimately do your work for the people of the city of Holland. In your name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next items on our agenda are our consent agenda items, and these are items that are considered to be fairly routine. They've been reviewed by council as part of our council packet, and they will be enacted in one motion, unless a member of the public or a member of council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda, and then it'll be placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. But before I ask that, Brenda, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
Yes. For A, excuse the absences of council members Corbin, Rowan, and Schulteis. For B, approve the minutes of the September eighteen regular meeting and September twenty five, twenty twenty four study session. For C, a claim filed against the city. For D, set a hearing for ATC Drive Train for PA one ninety eight tax abatement. For E, set a hearing for Uniform Color Company PA one ninety eight tax abatement. For F, set a public hearing for AMK Holdings LLC of four ninety three West Thirty Second Street for the Brownfield Plan. For G, authorize custody account agreement. For H, the transfer of ownership of retired police K nine. For I, a revocable license agreement for twenty eight East Eighth Street, a projecting sign. For J, approval of a special event liquor license application for the principal shopping districts up on the rooftops. And for K, award the bid for ADA repairs at the Holland Depot.
Wonderful, thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Any member of council that would like to have an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to remove H, item H.
Item H, that is the Public Safety Services Transfer of Ownership of a Retired Police K nine, and that'll be at item twelve E five point one then on the regular agenda. Anyone else like to remove an item from consent? All right, seeing none. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Moved by Sol, is there support?
Support.
Support by Vreeman, any discussion? Seeing none. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Byrd.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Sol.
Yes.
Shay.
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act of the state of Michigan, we provide the public the opportunity to be able to address council at our regular meetings, our study sessions, and at every board committee and commission meeting that we have. We do allow five minutes for each speaker. We ask that you approach the microphone and that you state your name and the municipality that you live in. You're limited to five minutes. There are three lights on the dais, the red light, the green light, and the yellow light. The green light means that you're doing well on time. Yellow light means that you have one minute left, and the red light means that your time has expired, and we are strict about that. We do, we do ask that you speak just one time, and this is one-way communication. It's an opportunity for you to speak to us about what you think is important, but we don't engage in discussion or answer questions during this time. With that being said, is there anyone here who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda, item seven A, downtown principal shopping district assessment. Mr. Van Beek.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. For the veterans of the group, I guess, and you'll recall that every fall we get to do this process, and it's a multi-step process. But I did promise staff that I won't, you know, give too much away and take away their talking points. So first we have Kara, that's going to go through the shopping district assessment and a resolution of necessity, and then Jeff is going to handle the next two. And we do recommend that we take these all separately, obviously. And I'm also going to give a plug for both of our wonderful staff and also Matt Helmes, where they supported us on Monday night with the Ambassador Academy and did a great job of exposing our class to all the great things that they do, supporting our, what we call our downtown groups. So Kara, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Box, members of city council. This evening, we are asking the city council to host, hold a hearing of necessity for the FY twenty four principal shopping district assessment and schedule the final hearing for that assessment at the October eighteen city council meeting, sixteen city council meeting. So the downtown Holland principal shopping district assessment is an assessment levied against properties within the PSD boundaries to support the PSD's goals of promoting downtown Holland. So that assessment helps fund things like our upcoming Fall Fest this Friday and Saturday, events like the Street Performers Series, Girlfriend's Weekend, also helps fund our downtown Holland website, which our new website will be going live by the end of the year, and all of the other marketing events that we do on behalf of downtown Holland. So the FY twenty five assessment will be levied against, let me find it, one hundred and eighty properties, and if approved, will generate about two hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and eleven and nine dollars and ninety-five cents in assessment funds. This year, the PSD Board of Directors did unanimously approve a rate increase of an additional three cents a square foot for properties within the core district only of our boundaries, which are the red areas on the map. The ground floor assessment rate has not been increased since two thousand and seven, but as everything is getting more expensive these days, we have discovered that there is a need to increase that ground floor square footage rate by three cents, bringing it up to twenty-five cents a square foot to keep the PSD financially stable. The other one change in this assessment process this year is a slight change to the core boundaries, as you can see on the map on the screen. We are going to be expanding the core boundaries slightly, as approved by the PSD Board of Directors, to incorporate all of Sixth Street and certain parts of Seventh Street that were considered edge before. With the Sixth Street renovation and the future development that we know will be coming to that block, we want to make sure that the PSD is able to meet the needs of the future developments within those boundaries. And that is all I have.
Great. Any questions for staff? Great, wonderful.
Thank you.
And we do need to do a public hearing on this, so at this point I will open for a public hearing. Is there any member of council, or excuse me, any member of the public who would like to address council on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item seven A?
Move to approve. Sorry, spaced a second. The downtown principal shopping district assessment, a resolution.
Moved by Vreeman, is there support? Support by Shay. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Vreeman.
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Sol?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excellent, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item seven B, downtown snowmelt operations and maintenance assessment. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So we're going to have Jeff Genova come up here, and I just walked back there because it dawned on me. Kara's been here several times, but I asked, I said, Jeff, is this the first time you've presented to council? And he said, yes.
Yes, it is.
So we have to do, you know, the traditional kind of things that we do to first-time presenters. Right now, we don't do that, Jeff, but maybe even before. Thank you, you look great. Maybe just for the benefit of everybody, just talk about how long you've been with us and what brought you to us, and do you like your job? I'm putting you on your spot there.
Okay, Mayor, council, very happy to speak to you this evening. Jeff Genova, I have been with the city since December twenty-sixth of last year. So almost a year coming up here in a couple of months. I came from Big Lake Brewing, I was the general manager there for six and a half years, so I was downtown already, and now I get to walk around downtown every day and talk to different businesses and different people in the public. And I love my job. I have the best job here in the city of Holland, I think it's fantastic. I get to go out, talk to people, and make sure that we as city employees are doing what we tell the businesses and the public that we're supposed to be doing, and try and fix the problems that we're not doing correctly. So I really enjoy my job. That includes snowmelt, which we're talking about tonight. We're asking for the council to approve a hearing of necessity and then a resolution to approve our snowmelt operation and maintenance, and what that does is that covers our snowmelt system that brings tons of people to Holland every year just to see sidewalks without snow when it's snowing out. And it's a wonderful thing. Basically, it goes Fifth, Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth Street, a little bit Ninth Street, Pine Street, Central College, Columbia, and then all the way down Central to Evergreen Commons. That's almost, what's a little bit over one million square feet if you include the Holland Energy Park of snowmelt. Almost twenty-four square acres, eight miles of snowmelt. So it's a lot of snowmelt out there that we're working with, valves, tubes. We have to clean out those pipes every once in a while with chemicals, so all of that goes into that operation and maintenance for it. And so right now, what we're proposing is a fifty-four cent assessment towards square footage, and that will cover what we need for operation this year.
Okay, great, thank you. And Jeff, welcome. I was wondering if this was your first time addressing council?
It is.
It's good to see you here, and you didn't mention that you'd been on planning commission prior to this, so we
Yes.
we knew you got to serve with you before that, and it's great to have you in this, in this position now.
I was, I was on planning commission and PSD Board and the design review board.
See, you had all kinds of places, bringing it right into being an employee here at the city of Holland. Are there any questions from council for staff? Yes.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, so the increase isn't fifty point five four one, it's, that is the assessment.
That's what the assessment will be, correct.
Three percent increase.
Yeah, it's a three percent increase to fifty-four point one.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Yes, Quincy?
I'm looking at the spreadsheet, the DSM twenty-five roll. In the percent change from twenty-three column, that's where they have all of the percentage change, three percent, varies all the way up to nine percent. I don't know if it's a formula issue, but there is a, it looks like a broken formula in there as well, is, is that correct?
So I think the change there is more than the number will fit in the line. It's like a, it's a bigger number because it went from zero to a large number, I believe is what the change is. The, the roll comes from the assessor's office, so I'm not a positive exactly, but I believe that's what it was, it was the change. And the ones that I see that have broken on them are all zeros across currently. And then the ones that don't, like the ones that are in yellow on page two, those are, most of those are from Sixth Street, which didn't have snowmelt until last year. So there's only one year, so the change is a higher number.
Understood, so there's no
There's no historical data form. Yeah.
All right, so that, that's probably the, is that the majority of them then?
Yes, and the other ones are zeros, and that's why it runs it.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Great, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Yeah, you made it through your first one.
All right, I'll sit down for two seconds.
We also need to do a public hearing on this, so I'll open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public who would like to address council on this particular issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item seven B?
Move to approve the downtown snowmelt operations and maintenance assessment.
Moved by Vreeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Sol, any discussion? Seeing none. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Raymond?
Yes.
Sol?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful, thank you. Item seven C, downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last time Jeff Genova was with us and made a presentation that went so well that we decided to invite him back.
Welcome back, Mr. Genova, it's nice to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor and council, thanks for having me back. The same as snowmelt, we're asking for a hearing of necessity and resolution. Today, we're asking for parking assessment. Parking assessment allows us to have free parking. We assess businesses that are within four hundred feet of public parking. That counts our two parking decks and fourteen hundred other surface lot spaces, as well as the three hundred street spaces, so we have over twenty-two hundred spaces available of free parking here in downtown Holland. That's a lot of parking spaces to cover. We, we snowplow those because not all of them are in snowmelt. We have to paint them, there's repairs that need to be done. Plus, we also have parking tickets that we write every once in a while for people that don't abide by our parking. Very rarely we write those, but we do every once in a while for handicap and residents that park in the customer parking, which we want to have available for all of our businesses to have their customers park free parking. That's the main reason that we do have our free parking. It's again a three percent increase over last year's. That helps us to keep up with inflation and be able to operate all of our parking, as you can see on the map down there, that four hundred foot radius, covers most all of downtown. That's pretty much what I have for that one. I don't have a whole lot for parking.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Great, seeing none. Thank you, made it through your second one.
All right, thank you.
Fabulous, two under your belt in one night.
All right.
Fabulous, great.
Thank you all.
We also need to do a public hearing on this item, so I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to address council in regard to this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item seven C?
Move to approve the downtown parking operations and maintenance assessment.
Moved, moved by Sol, is there support?
Support.
Support by Byrd, any discussion? Seeing none. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Sol?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Raymond, yes. Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item seven D, Community and Neighborhood Services Hold An Administrative Hearing, Bypass International, PA one ninety-eight I F T, Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will just clarify, just process. You didn't adopt the assessments technically tonight, you adopted that, the necessity, so there will be that one more step on the sixteenth. So it's within the motion, so we're, we're good. So every once in a while, we get to do something a little bit different, and this is one of those nights. So I'm going to ask Mark Myers to come up, who will talk you through our PA one ninety-eights and the contracts that we sign with these companies. And then sometimes when something happens in their business or otherwise, we, we have what we call a clawback provision, and then a process that we're having tonight, which is an administrative hearing regarding otherwise repaying those taxes. There's more to that than, you'll say it better than I just said it, Mark, so thanks for being here, Mark.
Thank you for teeing that up, Keith, thank you, Mayor and council, good evening. Yes, this is something that doesn't happen often, but from time to time, it, it does. When a company that has received a tax abatement decides to move their operation, in this case, we have a company, Bypass International, out of Zealand, was granted a twelve-year tax abatement in May of two thousand and twenty-two on a one point three million dollar investment to build out an interior space in a speculative building, promising four new jobs. Subsequently, in May, staff became aware that the company had moved its operation from the city of Holland to Zealand, and the facility where they were located in Holland was seventy-two West Sixty-Fourth Street. Under the tax abatement agreement, if a company moves within, in this case, within two years, they're, they shall pay back a hundred percent of the abated taxes. However, council also needs to hold a public hearing, which will occur tonight, and that provides the business owner a chance to address the city council and perhaps persuade you why they should not have to pay those taxes back. This evening, I do not see any representatives of the company. In this case, the abated taxes amount to twelve thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. That's for the tax year two thousand and twenty-three. In communicating with the company, I determined that they made a business decision. They had an opportunity to purchase a building near their Zealand location, which they decided to do. I'll also note that I didn't receive any communication that suggested that they felt that they were not, that they should not repay these abated taxes. I'll note that city council also has the right to revoke the tax abatement. In this case, I'm suggesting that it stay in place. Since this is a speculative, speculative building, there is a new tenant, and the new tenant, if they qualify, may be able to apply for a transfer of this abatement. That way, we keep the, that incentive intact. Should they not qualify or should they not apply, then I'll come back to city council with a recommendation to revoke. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions before the hearing.
Great, thanks, Mark. Any questions? Mr. Vreeman?
Mark, just to clarify, the tax abatement's for the property itself, right? And so if there's other tenants that come, what you just said, to apply for it, they can, because we've done this on the entire property, if I understood that correctly.
Yes, this one's a little more complicated because the, the building had received a spec I F T. When this company came in and did the interior build, that became a new I F T for that company. So right now, that abatement on the one point three million investment is, is intact and available for the next company who moves in, assuming that they qualify. They have to be a manufacturer.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Yes, Belinda?
So they did not make us aware at all, anything? They never attempted to say, hey, we're
No.
Is that normal, or is, have, I mean, you said this rarely happens, is this?
Yeah, it typically, the local government, in my experience, it, we find out through the grapevine, this came through the assessor's office because of an email from the property owner, the, the building owner, not the, not the business owner. And I was made aware of it, and we need to follow through with our agreements. But yeah, often, once, once we find out something like this occurs, if they haven't moved yet, we make sure to communicate with them and explain what the consequences are.
And you said they had not reached out anything
They did not.
on why they, you know, maybe reneging or whatnot. And then you said that the next business may qualify if they apply for it, but they do have to apply for it and
Yes, they have, they have to apply, I've had conversations with the building owner. The owner has communicated that to the company, but I haven't had follow-ups since. So I'm going to follow up with them and likely give them a deadline to say, you have until this date to apply, or we'll have to consider revocation.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Yes, Tim?
And just to follow up then, but you have been in conversation with the company that they are aware that this is taking place?
They're aware that it's taking place. We had an initial communication, and then I made them aware of the hearing through certified mail, so I know they got the, the notice, yes.
Any other questions? Great, thank you, Mark, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Also need to hold a public hearing on this, so I will open that public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to address council on this particular issue? Seeing none, I will close this public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
I motion to affirm the Act of one ninety-eight Tax Abatement Agreement between the city of Holland and Bypass International Incorporated dated May eleventh of two thousand and twenty-two, and require the company to pay a hundred percent of the abated taxes for the year twenty-three in the amount of twelve thousand, four eighty-four seventy-five.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Vreeman, do we have support?
Support.
Support by Sol, any discussion? Seeing none. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Sol?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. That is it for our public hearings this evening. Next item on the agenda, number nine, written petitions and communications. In addition to providing the opportunity for the public to address us in person at our meetings, we do also have an email address where you can send an email that will be received by all council members, that is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Those emails are received by all council members, reviewed and made part of the packet when we receive them, and then we do accept them into the record when we have them at our regular meetings. We do not have any this evening, but I always like to let people know that that's how you reach council is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Next item on the agenda is item twelve, Echo two point one, adopt a resolution to amend the housing development support policy and to add housing TIF incentive. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Mark is going to present on this also, but I'll try not to steal all of his presentation material other than just to remind that we had a great, robust study session on this topic a couple of months ago. And other than one change that Mark will certainly highlight from our conversations, this reflects the conversation that we had all of, with all of you in study session. Procedurally, remember, we brought this to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to have that discussion. That was also a really great discussion. They ended up struggling, maybe even is the word, a bit, and asked some really good questions, and ultimately said, hey, we're behind this, but ultimately, thanks for the opportunity to discuss it and, and make us aware, but really said, this is something that council's going to take final action on, so we'll just move, move it forward without recommendation and allow you guys to take action on it. I, I don't, that shouldn't be read as a, a negative on this at all. I think it was just a recognition of just more outside of their lane, and they're going to let you take action, and then they'll, they'll follow your lead. But this is an important thing. So certainly a long-going, ongoing commitment of council and certainly of staff. And from a larger perspective, I think we have a lot of great projects that have been accomplished in the city. So we definitely spent a lot of time taking a look at and figuring out, okay, the state has this larger policy that they allow, but what is the right fit for the city? So thank you to Mark for spearheading this, and he'll walk through ultimately what our recommendations are that would be, depending on your action tonight, incorporated into the larger housing development support policy. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Keith, thank you, Mayor and council. As Keith said, you'll recall our discussion at the August fourteen study session regarding the housing TIF incentive. Oh, thank you, Matt. Or Keith, whoever's advancing my slides that I, I typically forget. You got my back. So I won't go through the entire presentation, but again, the Brownfield law has been in place since the mid nineties. It was amended last year to include housing as an eligible activity. It was amended last year to include housing as an eligible activity under the Brownfield Act. The Brownfield Act allows for tax increment financing, that's the capture of new taxes from new development value to reimburse developers for costs such as cleaning up contamination, demolition, infrastructure, those types of things. So under this act, with this policy, housing activities would be eligible. Contamination and obsolescence and blight would not be a requirement to do a housing TIF. A housing TIF would reimburse those same costs as a traditional, traditional Brownfield, but in addition to that, the key is that it would also reimburse developers for the cost of construction, excuse me, the difference between the cost of construction and the sale or rent price of a housing unit. So the purpose of that is to, to incentivize the construction of more affordable and attainable housing. There are some... Touched on that already. Thanks, Keith. I'll get it, I'll get it one of these days. Don't tell Jeff that I'm, after a year, I'm messing up my presentation. This is the main criteria, and I won't go through all of this, but I will highlight what Keith referenced, and that was after our study session discussion, Keith and I met with a developer, it happened to be Jubilee Ministries, and Jubilee works in the attainable realm, which is 80% area median income households to 120% AMI. If you recall, we had suggested that for the for-sale units, we, we cap the AMI target at 100%. They were saying, well, you know, for the Ottawa Brownfield, for example, they'll have six units, and they, you know, argued that that's going to eliminate some of our, some of our clients with attainable housing needs. So what we came up with, and Keith, I give him credit for this, we incentivized that AMI target, we put it up to 120% for those units, those additional units, 50% of a development or beyond. So it, it further incentivizes the for-sale units, and it, and it broadens the availability from 100% to 120% for those particular units. I will touch on that Brownfield Redevelopment Authority had a very lengthy discussion about the policy. Much of that discussion was centered around the number of rental units that are currently being constructed versus the for-sale units. We have a lot of rental units being constructed, less for-sale units, we have a smaller need for, for rentals, a larger need for for-sales. So they did like the fact that we're incentivizing for-sale product greater than the rental. But at the end of the discussion, they thought, you know, this really isn't in our realm to get into the specific criteria for the housing TIF. So the consensus was, as a board, they support this as an incentive and believe that the housing incentive should be incorporated into the larger housing policy, but they're leaving to the city council those specific policy decisions related to the criteria. So with that, open it up for questions.
Any questions for staff? Yes, Ms. Raymond.
So we haven't spent any time talking about rehab as a, as one of the eligible activities, and, and I think, you know, to make housing affordable, if we can make existing units affordable, that's, that's even better. So in what way are we incentivizing rehab? I mean, we're essentially talking about new construction, at least that's the way I'm thinking about it.
Yeah. We get very few requests for rehab, but it does qualify under the statute, so it wouldn't be eliminated by this policy. I think if we had a rehab proposal, we would, we would take it on a, on a case-by-case basis.
So the owner of a property that wants to rehab it?
Yeah.
Okay. So we would just also, I mean, it just sounds like another one of those things to really, to kind of market, I think, in a way, to make sure that people know, because lots of houses could use rehab.
Right. And, you know, this is our first and best stab at this, but this is brand-new legislation. Until recently, there were only two housing TIFs that were even approved in the entire state. We do have one that was approved locally in Ottawa County, so it's new to everyone. So I think we need to remain open to, to being flexible to the demand that, that, as it comes, and perhaps, you know, revise standards depending on the situation.
Thanks.
Mr. Van Beek.
I do want to clarify, though, and I think we understand, but just someone that may be listening, like a rehab, like state law, you know, like it talks about different between an individual homeowner and a developer. So we, we all like to be weekend DIY warriors, right, and kind of do a rehab of our house. This doesn't apply to those types of situations. So really, even some of our great partners that exist in the community that maybe just do a rehab of a standalone house, it's, this is still really new, even at the state structure, much less with us. So just to clarify, I don't even think in that situation, would a rehab, when you think of it like that, really be able to qualify for this as a whole? Do I have that correct, Mark?
Yeah, the statute specifically exempts a single, you know, owner-occupied property owner to qualify.
So if a developer had a property that they wanted to rehab, that, even if it was just a single property, that would qualify?
I think the intent behind that, Lynn, is more, it'd be a developer that might have a multi-unit property that they rehab the entire. It's not so much, we could name some of our great local nonprofit partners, right, that maybe pick up a house, renovate it and put it. I do not believe in those situations, even a developer that picks up a single home would qualify under this state law. I'm looking at Mark a little bit.
If they don't...
Part of it is, is there's so much, this is still so new.
If they're not living in the home, I think it would qualify.
It would.
But again, this is very new.
Well, if you could, yeah, if you could just keep that in mind as you're learning more about it, that would be nice to know.
But rehab is in the definition of housing activity.
All right, Ms. Seoul, and then Mr. Shay.
Mark, um, which, you said there was one already approved in Ottawa County? Is that in our, what would that one be?
It's in the city of Hudsonville, and Hudsonville doesn't have a Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, so they used Ottawa County's Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and that's a multi-unit rental development, I believe.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Shay.
Yeah, kind of piggybacking back to what Lynn was talking about, what, what about, would this be a tool for someone turning something, maybe if there's a multi-unit, say, uh, excuse me, a two-unit house, right, that was historically a multi-unit, returning it to its multi-family use, would that fall under, do we know?
I think it could.
Okay.
Sure.
So one further, then if you were to turn a currently single-family house into a two flat, could we fall under that as well?
I believe we could under, under this, there, there might be other issues, you know, building code issues that come into play, of course.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Freeman.
More just a statement, Mark, I think this just brings highlight to the city's opportunities and responsibilities to get out of the way or empower housing versus someone standing in front of us asking us to build more houses, we don't build houses, but we empower those that are doing that. So just, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Van Beek.
I'm just, I'm just going to add, because I think sometimes, and Tim, the way you said that, maybe think of, let's just put this in kind of practical, like what, what have you seen in Holland of how this fits? So when you take a look at Vista Green or Vista Place, the combination projects that Jubilee and Habitat did, the change in the recommendation that we made from first time when we talked about it to, at study session here, is a good point, that we recognize that, you know, when you're, when you have Habitat and Jubilee for, in this case, both doing a larger-scale development, that's all ownership-based, and particularly in the Jubilee product where they do, Habitat does 80% and less.
Correct.
Jubilee does some in 80 to 100 and some in 200 and 120. And we had done a project before this tool was in place, where we did it through the land bank, and remember, we talked about we participated in the gap subsidy. If you would have replicated what we did there, using the policy that we first outlined and talked through with you, then some of the homes that Jubilee sold to people with an AMI between 100 and 120 wouldn't have been able to qualify for the subsidy. And when we reflected on it, yes, they brought it to our attention, but we really viewed that and said, boy, we had universal support, and we really thought, hey, we really need to change the policy to reflect something that you already approved, and we think we did the right thing. So that's where that came from, but probably more importantly, it gives a demonstration of a project that we've already partnered in, that this becomes now, probably, we don't have to figure it out again, like, like we have a tool in place that's prepared. You'll also recall that you've already approved one project where we know that's going to come back and ask for some iteration of this policy now that, assuming that you adopt it, on Ottawa Avenue. And on your consent agenda, the only thing you did so far is you set a hearing, but I'm sure you all read, read your consent agenda packet very well. We're really excited, actually, about another project on 32nd Street that's looking for a Brownfield that also identified, hey, first, we're just going to do kind of a traditional Brownfield, but they're interested in this potential tool also for the former senior living nursing home facility on 32nd near Ottawa, that we're really pleased that we found a partner that's securing that space and moving forward with the plan. So I only add that not so much to, you know, bring more substance to the conversation, but really kind of connect it to projects that not only you, but maybe the public can connect with and understand, like, oh, like, how would we use this? This is how we're using boring bureaucratic policy to actually drive, you know, initiatives and priorities that you've put in place in front of us, so we think this is a good use of that tool.
Great, any other questions? Wonderful. Thank you very much, Mark, appreciate it. What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item? Moved by Raymond, is there support?
Support.
Support by Seoul, any discussion? Seeing none, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Shay? Bird?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Seoul?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next, the item that was pulled off of the consent agenda, item 12, Echo 5.1, Transfer of Ownership of Retired Police Canine. Mr. Van Beek.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. And I don't think the intent was, but you're just going to have to do with me tonight, we don't have either officer or canine officer here tonight. Procedurally, just so you know, this is something, when we look back, it was like, is this just something administratively that we do, but we do have history that this is something that we brought to council. Probably could, an argument could be made, you don't really need to take action on this in the way that we've set it up. But I think partly, we do it just to recognize the program and to recognize what happens to these canines, these, these dogs that the handlers and their families, quite frankly, form a relationship with. So I think this is just a fitting and proper way that when the canine rotates out of service, we recognize that it goes back, in this case, to the family. So I think that lays it out. I think Quincy, I'll, I'll let Quincy make whatever comments or questions that he has at this point.
Yeah, Mr. Bird.
Really don't have any questions. The reason I brought this, or wanted to take this off was to honor Ruthie for her service, and also Officer Joel Remnick, his service with her as well. Outstanding individual he is, the dog's awesome, and I just wanted to bring light to that, and that's really it.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for staff on this item?
I, I do have one other thing, as Keith was speaking, city manager was speaking, I thought about something that happened, I think, before anybody was on council, but they brought a presentation to council on the process of how it's done when they have their, their canine from the very beginning until it actually gets into, I guess, service. Wondering if we could do that again sometime?
Sure, I forget about these because the last time that I heard that, actually, was just a couple of weeks ago at Ambassador Academy, with our Ambassador Academy class had a presentation by the canine, and they kind of had a abbreviated, like, okay, here's where we secure the dog and do the training of the dog and all of that, so we'd be happy to do that sometime.
All right, that'd be great. It's, it's a, it's not a week-long process, to say.
No, it's not, and, and it, the, these, these canines bring great service to the community in a lot of different ways that I think people don't always realize. Definitely been involved with finding missing, missing children, missing persons, safety for our parades, where we now have the ability, we have two of the dogs in particular that are able to detect firearms and, and explosives and those types of materials. So I think our officers right now would say they really can't imagine operating without the canines.
Correct, I agree with that. All right, thank you.
Great, any other questions? Great. What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Move to approve.
Moved by Bird, is there support?
Support.
Support by Freeman, any discussion? Seeing none, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Bird?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Seoul?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item number 13, Communications from the City Manager. Mr. Van Beek.
Yes, and I note it's 6:46.
I was not going to say anything. Time, time doesn't really matter to me at this point in the meeting.
So I will, just, just a handful of things, just particularly, I think, a busy and opportunity for people this weekend. The fire truck parade is Friday night, which is not just a Holland Department of Public Safety, it's regional. So great opportunity, kids in particular, I understand, really like fire trucks, and big kids, too. We also have, and we really appreciate the community, and tulip time, in this case, the organization helps us, where we have tulip time bulb planting this weekend, both Friday and on Saturday. I'll be out there Saturday morning at 8 o'clock, I'm sure it'll be beautiful weather, and it's, it's actually a fantastic time, and I so appreciate Andy and Jamie and Maria and the entire team of how they've really pivoted and used not just these couple volunteer days, but really empower and work with the community in so many ways, where we're planting way more of our nearly 700,000 tulip bulbs that we just took delivery on through volunteers. And I think it just is a great opportunity for the public there, listening, when you get an opportunity and want to volunteer and learn what it looks like to plant bulbs and... like to plant bulbs and maybe have ownership of a particular patch of tulips during tulip time, come, come join us. And it's also Fall Fest this weekend, as Cara pointed out. So, a lot of great things happening. I always make a plug for all of you, but anyone listening at home, you can get all of this information pushed out to you through our fantastic media team that does a monthly newsletter, and you can sign up for that. We push that out in different ways. Sign up for that on our website, or call City Hall. We'll help you figure out how to do that. And then we also put out a lot of really cool videos, and I just mentioned Maria here momentarily ago. Maria Rooks is the subject of our monthly highlight employee this month. So, check out that video. Really cool, and just highlights our fantastic staff that we have across the entire city. We did just do a few things, and I already talked a little bit about affordable housing tonight. I also had the opportunity to go to a ribbon cutting today, and that ribbon cutting was for Rust Haven, opening their Farmstead property on Twenty Fourth Street. You all were stuck in a bus with staff a couple of times where we drove by that, and we excitedly talked about that as a possibility. Many of you served on planning commission when you kind of saw that as it developed from a concept to reality. Well, it's reality, and one of the coolest things that I've learned today is, I mean, they just opened, and eighty-eight of the one hundred and four independent living units, people are in already, and they just opened. So, it's been really a smash success. It's a beautiful property. It's beautiful buildings. And as you've heard me say before, but I'm going to say this one more time, because I did share it with some of their board members and their executive director today, I think it's kind of a unrecognized, but a really additional solid strategy towards affordable housing, because I know for a fact, because I've talked to some of them, some of the people that have moved in there have moved out of homes in Holland, and it's not just a city thing, it might be in the region also, that may have moved out of a house that they've been in for forty, forty-five, fifty years, that are three- or four-bedroom homes, but there maybe is only one or two of them left in that large home. And they're, they couldn't be more excited about living in the new facilities with very active neighbors and a lot of way to socialize in a new way in their stage of life. But what's really cool is their home is now open for a new family to move into, and it's basic market economics, folks, right? There's more product coming back into the market. So, really cool to see kind of systemic how things work, and that this is actually something very, very positive for the larger community, and sometimes I, I at least need someone to make the connections there, so I'm just sharing that with you. I will let you know, I've communicated this on Fridays, but something a little bit different on our October sixteen council meeting, and if I look at my notes correctly, that's the next time we get together, because we're not going to have study session next week. So, in two weeks, we've been specific, you've been specifically invited to get a tour of the Lake Shore Advantage next center, now that they're basically ready to open. And we kind of talked about different opportunities of when it works best, and I hope it's okay, but I said, you know, it might be best to just do it right before a meeting sometime. So, what we're looking at is that you're all invited to do that at five o'clock on the sixteenth, right at their building, and then I emphasize, we can't be late for our own meeting, so we need to be back here at six o'clock. I'm looking for feedback or anything. I don't think it works great that we're eating potato chips and sandwiches at our desk here, so I'm thinking maybe on the sixteenth, and we just want to have a dinner. Does that sound okay? All right. And then the final thing, and maybe a tee-up, and I'll just leave it under your all comments, we are four weeks into the Ambassador Academy. Week one was a tour of the city. Week two was at the police department. Week three was probably the downer of the entire time. It was total lecture in the training center, our training room upstairs, no tour to go along with it by the mayor and I. Thank you. That night, we also had council members Freeman, Corbin, and Shea there that night. So, would love to hear maybe your perspectives on that. And then last night, as you heard, they got to see Windmill Island Gardens, PSD and DDA. So, it's been a great success. We still have six Monday nights to go, so you certainly are always welcome, and I would encourage at least one time, come out, get to know the class. More importantly, probably have the class get to know and recognize you, and just have that dialogue. It's been, I think, a great success and a lot of fun. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, appointments and communications from the mayor. I will just follow up on the Ambassador Academy. It was, I was there both the first night and the third night, and I, one, kudos, Keith, to you and staff, especially to you. You've been there to, and Mary Ann, have been there every single night. You already have a busy schedule. Those meetings are, or those Ambassador Academy evenings are exciting and interesting, but can be long. We, they are scheduled to be from six to nine, right? We know on Wednesday, or on the third night, we were there until nine forty-five-ish. The class didn't want to leave. They kept asking questions. They are an incredibly engaged group of citizens, residents of the city of Holland, who are excited to learn about their community, excited to learn about their city, how it works, how we make decisions. They, they ask great questions. They're involved. I think they're getting to know each other really well, and my impression from being there those two nights, I think that they're impressed with the way you and your staff do an incredible job for the, for the city and for the people who live here. And I do want to encourage other council members to attend this. This is actually a city council initiative. We're the ones that put this in place, and staff is carrying out that desire of ours. So, I think it's important that we're there for our own initiative, and it was, it was great to see council members Shea and Freeman and Corbin at week three. I don't know who was there at weeks two and weeks four, because I've only been, I've been to two of the four, but it is, it's fabulous. What a great, what a great class, what a great experience, what a great idea, putting it together. So, I encourage folks to do that. And that is all I have this evening. Next item I have on the agenda is appointments, motions, and communications from council members. Mr. Freeman, do you have something this evening?
I certainly do. I moved it to David Lockerty to appoint him to the Board of Appeals for a partial term, said term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. And I'm just looking for approval.
I think you're, I think you may be looking for a motion in that regard.
I'm making a motion is what I'm trying to do.
All right. Is there, is there support?
Support.
Support by Bird. Any discussion?
He'll support that.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Any other appointments, motions, communications from council members? Yes, Ms. Sol?
I just want to remind everyone that absentee ballots are going out, and to make sure you get it in by the date, and so, just a friendly reminder, your voice, your voice is your vote, and your vote is your voice. So, thank you.
Yep, great. Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, I just want to extend just a lot of gratitude for Keith, but also the leadership of your team and how they're exercising. I think what, exercising their leadership, and one of the things Nathan said, was one of the goals that we had had for the coming year was greater engagement. The academy is a good example of that, but also, I think, engaging our community, whether it be through tulip planting, so all their different ways, the students that are being managed through the youth advisory boards and all of that. It just feels like there's a nice surge of what's taking place with Parks and Rec and tulip planting, of volunteer and community engagement. And so, thank you to you, to your team, because you always defer to your team anyway, so I'll include them. But just way to go. I think it's noticed and brings some light to it. So, thanks.
Any other motions, communications, appointments from council members? Seeing none. There's just one more motion. I would entertain it this time.
Moved to adjourn.
Moved by Freeman. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Sol. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening.